Ladies and gentlemen, the auditor says get up. Please rise. Would anybody out there like to say the prayer before we get started? Anybody, any volunteers? Dear heavenly Father, come before you tonight to say thank you once again for your love and mercy and grace that you made new. Thank you for your guidance, your love, and your support for us. Lord, help us just come together as a group to better our community and our county and work together as a team, Lord, and put you first above it all. And please forgive us where we fail you of our sins and shortcomings in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Amen. Good evening. We're not going to try to take a whole lot of time, but I've lied before, not intentionally. So, welcome. Get my glasses on. Roll call, morning.
Kirk.
David S., Kirk. Sam, yes. The principal minutes, gentlemen, you've had your minutes before you, they were sent to us and stuff like that earlier. There was a couple changes, I believe, the wording, couple misspells was being corrected. I've went over the minutes. How about you all?
Yep. I'll move the week approved minutes.
Seven.
All in favor?
Three.
On the claims, our total claims are $611,000, $611,000, $604.34. Payroll is $310,872, one penny. Regular claims, $263,491.18. And out of cycle claims, $37,241.15. And out of cycle claims, of course, utilities, visa to shield under drug free grant. Men?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Three. A lot of financial and funds reports, Sheila.
Give me an update, if any money has come in since they will not be able to go. Great hit now on the head, the 1176 and 73 fund, maybe in a little over $8,000 each.
Yep.
But their balance is still increased or just totally gaining ground in your highway funds. Earlier, they have one fund in your, uh, in five years or something, and they're working on that one. It's a lot of issues.
Yep, good. That's good. Any questions for the public on the funds? The whole business, I'm gonna, I'm not skipping the jail, but on the human resource position for everybody and all and for the council, I don't, any of the council are here tonight. Maybe, hope somebody's listening. We do have specifics on the job duties, correct Sheila, that me and you talked about. We'll be writing those up and presenting those to the council at their next meeting. It's a, in detail of what the human resource officer will do. Ladies and gentlemen, I will give you a copy of that. I know I haven't tonight yet because I just received it, just got it updated. You guys look at it and give me, you know, give me your approval or something, or give me your thoughts on what you think it is so we can present this to the council at their next meeting. Correct Sheila? And me and you kind of went over that a little bit today. I thought it was very outlined, detailed information. I know that the council is wanting in order for us to proceed with funding the human resources position. Okay, the big news of the day, the jail project discussions and presentations. BW, you're here today?
Yes, sir.
You guys got anything you want to say?
Unless you guys want to stop by, we'd be happy to.
You just showed up to see me then.
That's absolutely right.
Cookies, no cookies tonight.
Well, when's the next meeting, September 4th, something like that? 5th? Well, let me just make the announcement because my wife is listening to this. Honey, I love you dearly, you know that. Next meeting is the 4th at 9:00 a.m. Please show up and we'll have something to eat. You hear that, honey? Okay. Jail project update, discussion, presentations. We've had BW camp, thank yous for coming to show us your presentation. We've had Garmont show up. Jeff Peters have been here, the financial consultant. This is just my opinion. Only my opinion, other two commissioners can step in. We need, I mean, you've talked, sir. Both BW and Garmont have stated that they can do a bot system, build, operate, transfer, where it houses our money in one box. So, we stay within that scope. Bill, you understand where I'm going to, commander's here, thank you for coming. And so with that, with that being said, and I want us all to work together because that's the goal, is for this commissioner to get him built, what he needs, and to share with the taxpayers dollars and to do everything we can to get that design that's on the wall built out there at our land site with, of course, the least amount of money possible. That is our goal. So, for me personally as commissioner, I think that we should figure out from BW and from Garmont, anybody else that wants to participate, I would like a cost. What's it going to take to build that jail? A hard, fairly hard cost that we can get, plus the soft cost. Okay, now, I know our financial buyers and Jeff Peters, and I don't know whether you guys got a copy of that, his presentation or not, it has the breakdown of the soft costs and different things and where we're going to be. I'd like to be able to say within a realm of certainty that this is what it's going to cost for us to build this jail in its entirety, all inclusive. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So, what I would say to that commissioner is, if you go to the BOT, right, you get your GMP or guaranteed maximum price, and that's where it's sort of work backwards from that, right? And so, it's like, okay, we're gonna go with, we can go with more expensive fixtures on this and this, or we have to go with, you know, less expensive door and ops, right? And so, you start working back from all of that.
Yes.
Once you get there, obviously, we'll work with them whatever, right, the constraints you guys give us.
And I understand the working backwards type process, but for me, and Bill chime in, any, or commissioners, please, you know, you uns have the design that we're looking at from Elavodas.
Yep.
You have that design. And I would like to see what your cost would be for that right there. Okay? In its entirety, with whatever is on that map that Elavodas drafted up and the sheriff and the commander and them are wanting, I'd like to see what that's going to be. I'm a realist, you know, we could always say we've got this pot of money, then you kind of work backwards from that pot of money. But I'm from the old school, tell me what it's going to cost right now.
Yep.
Then that gives us, as well as the council and the commander and the sheriff, if you come in and say it's going to cost X amount, and we're determining what our soft costs are going to be, that's going to give us a more realistic picture of exactly what we can get. Does that make, does, I'm probably not, I'm not a good grammar person, English language composition.
For sure.
But I think for us to look at that and say, this is, this is what we can do. Because, of course, we'd like to build it for $20 million.
Yeah.
You not happy with that, are you?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I'd like for yous to come back and say, you know what, we can build that right there in soft cost, 09 yards, all these extra toilets and all this stuff and chrome fixtures and for 20 million, I'd be, you know. But I'm also a realist too. It's perception against reality. And I'm not going to throw out a number there, that this is the number that we have to use until I know what's going to cost me.
For sure.
It's easy to get the number, then build backwards. And I know that's how it's done a lot. And that, once again, the council, and I hope they're listening and stuff like that because at the end of the day, commissioners, if I'm correct, it's going to be the council's decision on how much money they're going to fund toward this project. You know, so, but if we know out of the gate that building, jail's going to cost us this amount, and we have a pretty high idea what our soft cost is, if I have that information and my fellow commissioners have that information, then when the council tells me, they give me their information, then I, then I can, I can dot it together. Or I can look at it and say, we need to talk again, you know what I'm saying? Or may have talked to the commander or the sheriff. I like to know upfront what the jail's going to cost me. Is that fair?
Yeah.
No change orders.
Yeah, yeah. No change orders.
The problem we have is, when we got the proposal or the, of the numbers, if you will, last week, there's not a lot of room. There's not a lot of room from what we know we're bringing in to make a payment and what that payment's going to look like, given a number. That's why it would be really nice to have that number. The other thing that's the unknown for us is legislators have already changed things and we're looking out to 27 and beyond, and 27 beyond right now is just the same number written over and over and over. And we all know that a year from now, that could all be out the window, depending on what happens.
Yep.
That's the unknown that we have to deal with because we know we've got this for, what is it, 20 years we're looking at? So, 17 of those years are kind of in the wind right now. We got to have something concrete to work from.
Yep.
So that we can put a contingency plan in place, and in case they do something like that, we've got another option. Because once it's sitting there and the payments start, the mortgage company doesn't want to hear our soft story, they want their payment.
That's right.
So, we want to make sure we can make that payment, right?
Yeah, I agree.
You guys have something unique in that situation.
Yeah, I don't know.
Still trying to.
Everybody is.
After SB 1, the effects that it's had on localities, so completely understand where you guys are coming from.
We don't want to, I mean, this jail project's been going on for 15 years? Eight, nine, 10, yeah, about 15 years. And, you know, it's our obligation to build the sheriff and the commander, what they need to house their inmates as well as take care of their employees. And we're going to do that, like Commissioner Warner said, with the uncertainty, nobody has a crystal ball, only God knows what's going to happen from moment to moment. We don't, God does, but we don't want to strap the county so tight that if something comes up the next day, we can't move, you know. But then again, all three commissioners sitting here and the commander, that's what we want because that's what they need. So, it's not a want, I mean, it's a need. Is that correct, man?
Absolutely.
A need. So, we don't want to delay this any longer, we want this to move forward. So, I ask your team, and I'm going to ask the same from Garmont, I spoke to Mr. Zerner today, and, you know, and we're going to meet and talk again, he's got some more information. That's, I'll talk to me, I'll meet with anybody, you know what I'm saying? Because I like information, but it's going to come down to, for the companies, outfits, whatever, to tell us what it's going to cost to build that jail.
Well, you've done your job, made everybody the scope. Now, our job is guaranteed maximum price for no change orders.
That's what we need. And how soon can you do that?
Excuse me.
Let me get my glasses.
Yeah, let's talk to the big, big guy.
When do you want it?
Yesterday.
Yesterday? That's a good timeline.
If it gets by the 4th, the council meets on the 8th. And Jeff Peters is giving his presentation again. That would kind of give you a balance of numbers. That's what we kind of have.
If we, you know, if we have by September 4th, I know that's two weeks, but I want to make it perfectly clear, I'm giving Garmont the same, the same. My chief deputy always told me to be firm, fair, and consistent, or somebody told me. I want to make sure that everybody's on the same playing field. But if we could have it by the 4th, then we go to the council meeting on the 8th, and if it's all good, then, then we get started. I mean, I, I'm sure the commander's going to shake his head yes or stand up and testify that. I'd like to see us under contract, personally, myself, some sort of agreement, no later than 1st of October. Sooner the better. Maybe it could be at the second, maybe it could be at the second council commissioners meeting, that which is on September 18th.
So, when you do a BOT, just from your guys' knowledge, you'll have to at some point introduce a BOT resolution, only you guys have to pass that, they'll pass that, or all you guys sign, and then you can do a BOT. And then, once you do that, you have to create a committee, a selection committee, submit RFPs. You guys will put out an RFP, people will submit to that, and you can do interviews or have them see that, and then you can make your selection.
And that's what, four, five, six weeks?
No. I mean, you could do, I mean, you could do.
The resolutions.
On the 4th, you could do it.
Formality.
Yeah, you guys could literally just add it to the agenda on the 4th. And they're very standard, I mean, everybody does them. We could provide, if I'm wrong, we could provide the exact same thing, I have an email to you just saying, you know, Owen County Commissioners have selected, they have selected TBTs, inner community going forward, per IC 533, whatever it is, yeah, so, sign online and then.
I don't, I don't see any reason, I mean, we got, you know, some cost to figure and stuff like that. And once again, the council meet's on the 8th, and Jeff Peters giving the financial document, again, it'll be a council's decision to say, yeah, this is, we can do this, or we got, no, we got, we can only do this. Then, once we know that number as well, even though we're getting, even though we have your number already, and they tell us what the number is, that's reality for us three commissioners saying, okay, this is, this is what they can do, and here's the number, then if we have to say, oh, well, we may have to go back, talk to the commander or the sheriff and say this, or hey, guys, great, we're moving on. Praise God, I'll get the doughnuts. So, is that good?
Yes, we'll work on something after I am, before I go.
You commissioners, do yous have anything else about the jail project?
Well, I'd just like to say, we need to get this done, guys.
Yes, sir.
The sooner the better because if we roll over into next year without being under contract, that price is going to go up. So, we can't afford to drag our feet any longer. And I hope to see the council step up and give us a hard figure on their end and get a figure on your end. That way, we know where to go.
And I think the council will, because I think the council's on board anyway. I think they know that constituents or constituents, I don't even know what that word means, the taxpayers who are paying two taxes right now, correctional facility tax and the public safety tax, they want to see something done. It's their money, and we've not turned a stone over yet, and it's time that we, where the rubber meets the road, and let's get on with it.
The fact that you guys have already got, for the most part, that power design done, you're being forward to come to BOT, a lot of times, folks will wait for the BOT selection before they even start designing, beginning the scoping, so you guys are ahead of the curve, so I wouldn't be worried about the selection process. You guys have already done so much upfront that, I mean, you can start in October and have somebody in, get out of the contract before that.
Well, and I go, you know, we hired this guy, this guy, that's not very nice. The county attorney, you know, he puts his two cents worth into because, you know, he's responsible for us to not get into something that we shouldn't be getting into. And he likes the BOT a lot because it puts us in a box of money. We're not getting outside that box. If it costs $500, it's not $501, it's $500. Don't send us a bill for $501 unless we get into, unless the scope of work changes.
Same.
Correct, sir? The scope of work changed, we understand that. As long as the scope of work stays same, everything's great, then we get on building the jail. Anything else? You guys got anything else?
Yes, sir.
Praise God, just moving around a little.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you both. I don't know whether this is going to be good news, bad news, because it must be real bad news till I can't even find it. The Ron Remack, the insurance thing, what did I do with the shoe? Hang on a minute. That's not it. That's not it, it's two page thing, I laid it down somewhere. Hey, you can't take me no more. That's not it, that's not it, that's not it. What'd you do with the shoe? I know what you did.
I don't have them over here.
Oh, okay, got it, fine. Man, if I just had some cookies, I'd be good, sure. This is from Ron Remack, our insurance consultant. Ron presented to us last meeting that IU Health sold out to Anthem. Anthem has yet to say whether they're going to honor the contract for all of 2026 yet. But here's what they're saying, and I want to read this to you, I don't like, you know, really reading, but I want, this is what Ron has presented to us, and this is for all county employees. He called me the other morning, then he sent this email. As I mentioned to Sam this morning, although Anthem is still not committed to honoring IU HP's agreement, they are strongly considering offering the following. A 10% increase for 2026 after reviewing claims through August, but charging you at the exact same rates as IU HP is currently charging at the county, which would allow your 2026 budget to stay intact on what it was anticipating. The caveat is, if that's how you pronounce that word, if you have a difficult claims this year, meaning here in 2025, they will ask for the county to reimburse 10% that they didn't receive through 2026, I'm sorry, 2026. Quite frankly, we have known that IU HP has consistently charged 15 to 25% less premium with its narrow network to IU's health physicians, facilities, so the manual rates Anthem would typically charge on your group is close to 30% higher than the current. On another hand... On another hand, if you have a good claims year, like you're having so far this year, you will not be expected to reimburse Anthem back the 10%. Once the above is approved, I will ask for the details of the above and writing to share you, with you for your final discernment." So what Ron is telling us, that through 2026, if we have a good claims year and everything is going well, Anthem will honor the 2026 contract. But if our claims are terrible, and we have a lot of claims, and we're above where we need to be, or we don't have the attendance in the, what's that called, the public?
Healthy results.
Healthy results. Anthem has the right to backcharge us 10% for all of 2026. Okay? And I'll speak more about that in a minute, and I'll finish reading this. "Also, we're anticipating quotes from UHC and C I H O soon to make sure you have a clearer view of the rest of the marketplace, which will all share as soon as we receive those and compare. They don't have those yet. Under the circumstances, I am not overly optimistic that they'll be able to compete with Anthem's offer, but we will see. And if so, we'll immediately share any competitive offer with Anthem. Finally, so that we can keep the ultimate solution of their, them completely honoring IUHP's agreement in front of them, I have sent a formal complaint to the Indiana Department of Insurance. It will keep you updated as this evolves." And here comes the meat. And I agree with this. I recommend, this is one of my recommendations. "In the meantime, my recommendation would be to seriously consider budgeting not only the 10% possible payback to Anthem, which we might incur at the end of 26, and at least another 10% for a total of 20% to help support the reality of having to see what Anthem and the rest of the market will offer you in 2027. Next summer, we would again aggressively go to the market to help you prepare for your 2027 plan and budget year." So in reality, if we have a good claims year in 2026, Anthem's gonna honor the 2026 prices. If we have a bad claims year in 2026, we're gonna have to pay back 10% of our premiums. Now, I'm, I'm just a reality check here. I would think that Anthem would, if they was going to come right out and say they're gonna honor this, they would already come out and said they was gonna honor this. So I agree with what Ron has put here. We need to budget the 10% that we may get taxed on for 2026, but we need to budget another 10% to cover the rate increase that is coming for 2027. Because rest assured, unless somebody's got a crystal ball here, our insurance rates are gonna go up. So for all you employees, we hope to have a good year in 2026 with not too many claims. We're gonna honor that contract. If not, the county is going to have to reimburse the 10%. But I definitely would look for insurance increase by 2027. You think that's right, Sheila? If that makes any sense to the employees. Now, and one other thing, that the county pays 94, 96%, of the insurance for the county employees right now. I'm not throwing this out there to disturb anybody, or by no means. Once again, I'm a realist. If the rates continue to go up, if the premiums continue to go up, the county is going to have to do something. Because we pay a ton of money for insurance, don't we, Sheila? And it's one of our biggest expenses. So anyway, it's not all real bad news, you know? I do worry about the rates on 2027, but we hope to have a good 2026 year. And hopefully Anthem will honor that, and Anthem will take a real strong look at our rates now. And hopefully in 2027, it doesn't go through the roof. But we need to go ahead and budget for now for what's happening. We need to have that money put back in the well, so to speak. Man, you got anything? Sorry.
I agree.
It's just too easy to do for someone.
We're the worst.
Hillie Hunter, gentlemen, come on up there, sir.
Thank you for keeping me, uh, for standing up front.
Well, you can shut back down. We can bring you up last if you want to.
So basically, we're just asking permission to use the roads, essentially Hardscrabble Road up by the Formix Creek Elementary to, I think it's Williams Road and over to Texas Street. So it's only on Saturday, October 11th. We've called the dispatch to arrange for an officer at State Route 46 in Concord Road because a lot of traffic there. We were missing an officer there last year, so we're hoping that everything works well this year to have someone there. Expecting probably 8:30 to about 11 o'clock for the majority of the riders. Don't expect anyone before 8:30.
What date is that?
Saturday, October 11th.
This one here? Yeah. That's, that's just, yeah, I don't have, I mean, Commander, did the sheriff say anything about Hillie Hunter, do you, if that's gonna be? I don't have no problem with it. We've done it for years and years and years. I'm here to honor it. I think, you know, it's a good thing. I know a lot of people like it, some people don't. You know what? Keep pleasing everybody. So I make a motion that we approve the Hillie Hunter for October 11th. On the, we have a map, laid out map for them from, I just put from 8:30 to noon. Is that fair?
Yes.
Fair assessment?
Yep.
That's my motion. I'll second. And, oh, and waive the fee, sir. We'll waive the fee, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Norm? What's your thoughts?
No, I, we've done it for years. He's got a waiver in here, which would be my only concern is, you know, liability, so.
Make sure you're covered there.
Right.
And you do have a certificate of insurance?
Uh, yes, we have, uh, PK, MKU insurance.
Okay, and does the auditor's office have a copy, they have a copy of that already?
Part one from last year, and the rest they, but go ahead and send us another copy tomorrow.
Okay.
Make sure we had something here packaged too.
Apparently sure we put something in the packet there, that I can make sure we resend it to.
Okay, and we'll get this, well, we got a motion on the floor. All in favor? Three oh. We'll get this signed this evening, and we'll have the auditor send it to you, okay?
Okay.
Is that fair enough? Appreciate you, sir. Thank you.
And we'll get the, we'll get one and see you on it.
Appreciate it. So sheva contract, Larry, I know you're here, and I'm not going, I'm not going to ignore you, Larry. But Larry, I'm going to ignore you. And I'm gonna let you speak to Commissioner Warner. This is his Baileywood. You know, last year or this year when you guys came and talked, or like whenever it was. I still don't know what you talked about last time, because I just don't know enough about it, but Norm does.
Okay, so I looked through this several times, and we're with you over at the schools where I work, so. Known Jim for years. I do have a couple of questions. So we're tying ourselves in for 60 months, right? 957, 40 a month, and that includes everything all in, right? I don't see any other associated cost. Are these the only nine copiers we have?
No, no, this is the, so we replaced nine copiers in November.
Okay.
These were two other contracts. Sheila and I have been working to try to make sure we get all of the, all of the copiers onto one contract. I couldn't do it last time because of the cost of everything, being your ship returned and before the end of the other contracts. So this one will make it so that on the next contract, if you choose the sheva, we'll have the ability to put it all on one.
Okay. So when does the other contract that you're talking about end?
Uh, 63 months from November of last year.
63 months from November of last year?
Right.
And how many is on that? Do you know?
I believe it was, it was nine, I believe, but I'm not positive on that. I can get that back to you.
Okay.
It was around the same amount.
So we have a total of 18 roughly?
Right.
All right, so do you, can you tell me what we're paying for that nine? Do you know?
One of the problems that started in February, we were just in a conversation and then going around to all the departments and what we have, what we really need, and try to figure something out.
Yeah.
So again, back in February, we're just now getting what is added to it. Part of the request was for them to be able to combine multiple bills into one, so we're not having to send a copy of whatever bill, or one of the departments, and then sending a claim back. And then we're filling out half a dozen different checks.
Right.
Because the amounts are different. They're based on the usage, the number of copies, the number of colored copies, and so on. That was the original to try to get it simplified and then realized as they went around that there were updates that were needed. And we hoped that they had happened sooner, because we have a couple of departments that, you know, don't have any or they're happy to work with other offices just to get what they need, so.
So between these nine and the nine he's talking about on the other contract, is that the balance of all the copiers we have in the, in the?
Yes.
County? And the recorder, did she ever get her new one?
Those are on this contract.
They're on this contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the 3528A is a, one you're replacing something with?
Uh, the 3528A was for voter registration. They have a used machine that was, it's two iterations old now. It was one iteration old when they, when they got that one. So it's getting to the point where it'll end up being obsolete. So we put that in this one.
So I've, Sheila, your paperwork says Recorder's Office, 3528A. That's why I was asking.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, yeah, we've got one for voter registration. Yeah, it's, she's got one 3528A and I think a 25AC.
Which is on the other contract apparently, because it's not on here, right? For the, oh, I see it. So a 4525AC, which is called, right?
She needs one for the office and then one is for customer registration.
Okay.
She charges for customer registration.
I'd really like to know what that other contract.
Yeah, I'm looking for it right now. Sorry to hold us up, but it's kind of important, but yeah.
You take all the time you want. I'm not trying to ignore you, but I absolutely don't know what you're talking about. Commander, what's your population, whether, what's, what's population today?
340. Around about mid to over 40, but quite a few get out this week, so.
That's good.
Not through the hole in the wall, but you let them go, right?
No, the, the court has seen that they disturbed the time that they needed to be through.
That's what I said, they weren't just walking out, right?
No.
You, Tom, brother? Yes, go ahead.
So we received $16,074 of the money that we're not expecting. We also got various, that we're looking for the next quarter, rounded money and a lot, a lot of money. Yeah. We had to sign that account. I'm just doing that, we go back and we look at what the original department's board have got distribution. There's some of them that haven't been done, and maybe let's revamp the whole thing and include what we have, which would require either a committee, Joel handled the original ones that started a few years ago. But this is supposed to be more significant than what we got. So I would like to be able, maybe to redo. When we get to budget hearings next week, we submitted the same budget that we had. We need that minimum because it includes the data officer. So once you set that aside, I would like to put it back out to departments and those that really need it and try to redo and gain as much as we can out of the used money. They're guaranteed to still have 17 more years of funds coming in. And we'll know how much the other ones are. So I want that to be part of your budget discussions next week in trying to, to work and redo and present to the council. But the commissioners have the, 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 the funds.
I agree. I think there's some, and why he's looking for that. What's he got out there? Microscope?
Let's get the same problem I got. My focus doesn't work.
Nope, I'm having trouble seeing on a white background, and of course, the graph is on a white background.
We need to reach out and make sure that the groups that are.
There's always the option of just sending it to me.
I can do that, yeah. I want, I want to say it's around $800, but I'm guessing at that. It's been a while since I looked at the.
And is it a, is it a 60 mon, it's, you said it's a 63 month?
It's 63, yeah.
So it's longer, same amount of copiers, and it's a hundred dollar, almost 200 cheaper, 150? Is that because?
I'm not sure what the, what the copiers compared. I'm not sure how many dollars compared to last.
So before we do anything with this, I'd like to see that other one. And you say these will run out about the same time?
Yes.
Because the ultimate goal here, and I've been fighting it over there for years, is everything's on one bill and we pay one place at one time. We do it quarterly, but that's a discussion for another day. But until, I want to compare the two, see what you've got on that one, especially since they're the same number of copiers. If the models are close, then I want to know what the discrepancy in the numbers are. If their models aren't close, then we can talk. But I would like to see the other contract, the one that's in force right now, and the other nine.
Okay.
Okay? Other than that, I'd say we table this until I get those numbers.
Motion on the floor. I'll second table. All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. The capital improvement plan. Sheila, do you want to touch base with me and just read this? I know, it's a tank. You got one, sir?
I do.
Praise God.
Whereas, this is the capital improvement plan of Owen County, Indiana. Whereas pursuant to Indiana Code 6-3.6, Owen County, Indiana is intended to receive local income tax, economic development share, now in ceded funds for the state of Indiana. Whereas Indiana Code 6 dash, yeah, 6 point, sorry. 6-3.6-10-2 of the Act states that funds may be used for any lawful purpose. Whereas Indiana Code 6-3.6-6-9.5 of the Act states the executive of the county may adopt a capital improvement plan specifying the uses of revenue to be received under the Act. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Owen County adopts this resolution. The following capital improvement plan. One, the ceded funds received from the state shall be deposited in the county's Lit Economic Development Fund. 1112. Two, the ceded funds will be used upon consultation and adoption by the county fiscal body for lawful purposes as defined in Indiana Code 6-3.6-10-2. Three, the following capital improvement plan is hereby adopted. Contract services for 2024, $75,000. Contract services for twenty twenty-four, seventy-five thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-five, in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. For ADA compliance in twenty twenty-five, you designated thirty thousand dollars. C, group insurance for twenty twenty-four, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. In twenty twenty-five, that amount will be four hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. D is a grant match, twenty twenty-four, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. That amount increases to twenty, in twenty twenty-five, to five hundred thousand dollars. That means the total for twenty twenty-four, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars, two hundred and eighty-three, two hundred, can't even talk, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars. And for twenty twenty-five, it is one million, fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Foregoing capital improvement plan encompasses calendar years twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and incorporates projects, the cost of which are at least seventy-five percent of the fractional amount of certified distribution expected to be received by the county during such period of time. Approved and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, Owen County, Indiana, the seventh day of August, twenty twenty-five.
You guys have any questions about the capital improvement plan? No? Good. I'm making motion that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-five zero zero five, Owen County Board of Commissioners, and the capital improvement plan for Owen County, Indiana.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, oh. What, what did I do?
He didn't, I, I was able to pull up what we pay and come on for, for the contract services. And we're showing, we're paying sixteen hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-seven cents a month currently.
What's that, I'm sorry?
We're currently paying sixteen hundred and eighty dollars and sixty, seven cents a month.
I found the, the last lease, it was, it's seven sixty-four and change, and it's for seven machines.
For seven machines?
Yes.
So what is the sixteen eighty sixty-seven for?
That's, that's all, all of the invoices combined right now, that we have.
All the combined invoices?
That's what we're doing, you've got that one, and then these will be on another one, so you're gonna be, what, nine seventy-five and seven sixty-four?
I don't have a calculator, I'm probably overpensed. So the, the combined cost is the sixteen eighty, so between this one and the one he, and we're on, one more are we on?
Yeah.
Okay, I still need to see what those copiers are, I want to know.
I, I, I can tell you what they are.
Okay.
They are, uh, see, we've got a...
Seven oh.
Forty-five twenty-eight, forty-five twenty-eight. Let's see, we've got three forty-five twenty-eights, and four forty-five twenty-fives.
So essentially, the models aren't that different?
No. No, in fact, same models, because it's, it's still in our, it's still our current.
So the difference of two copiers is a hundred and, what's the difference? What was that number, Sheila, seven one?
Seven sixty-four.
Seven sixty-four.
Nine seventy.
So we're looking at a hundred dollars per copier for the other two. So in essence, it's gone up just a little bit, but not crazy amount, because you said there was nine, and there's actually seven?
Right.
Okay. Alright. Well, we've already tabled it, it's already been voted on, so I would like to see this paperwork on the old contract, can you get that over to me?
Yes, sir.
Our ne, our next meeting is the fourth?
Yes, sir.
We can readdress it then, okay?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, let me jump out of order here.
No, you, alright, I stay out, I stay out of order. Okay, the next, uh, item is on the list, and I have to take full responsibility of dropping the ball on this, it's all my fault, nobody else to blame. So if you've got any problems, please address me with it, and not the rest of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, the Commissioner or Board of, Board of Apointments for the Pete, the PC, the BZA, and ABC. I, I said in a meeting in June, yes, it's been some time, and I said at the last meeting, that any interested parties, they've turned into the auditor's office, Craig, Sheila, we have people that are interested. I did say that we would talk to these people in person to get their thoughts, ideas, goals, concerns, complaints. And I failed to set up a time for these two commissioners to meet with me and these, and these, um, people that are interested. Uh, it's all my fault, once again. So, uh, we're going to meet, uh, the Board of Commissioners, we're gonna set up a time, um, next week, we, we have to, to interview, talk to whoever want, is interested, that whoever has turned in their interest on these positions. I'm, 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 I'm sorry, Heather, that I dropped the ball.
It's okay.
So, at this time, we are going to have the table.
Uh, Sam?
Yes?
Do you want to go ahead and reaffirm the current members on both of those boards?
If you can, if you know that, if you know what that list is.
Sheila, you have the list, right?
I can tell you what they are.
Yeah, just run them down for us by, by the group, just start with the BZA.
Do you want me to, do you want me to write it down, or do you?
You can just tell us, can't, I mean...
I don't want to talk you about it.
Is that, is that the list?
She's got a planning and BZA list, and options.
Yeah, that's the one you sent us, I just don't have it in front of me. I'll just take them one at a time, one group at a time.
Okay, um, let's do, uh, BZA, Chad Van Ryn, Corbin Abel, Beth Wood, and Sandra Calvert.
Okay, so my motion is that we reaffirm their appointments and vote on it so that it's, that we know those people have been seated properly. And also that we certify the decisions they've made up to this point.
That's right.
That we, uh, we certify those decisions. And that's for just the BZA at this point.
Is that correct?
That'd be my motion.
Is that correct? Yeah. That is correct, according to the county attorney.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, oh.
And then, planning commission, you just need citizen members for that.
Right, we just need those five names, yeah.
Right, well, I have...
There's not five of them, but...
Bill Prusell, Chad Van Ryn, and Donna McIntyre.
Same motion, uh, except those three names, uh, re, re, recertify that they've been voted on and on that board, and to certify all decisions made by those folks in interim for this calendar year.
I'll second. All in favor? Three, oh.
I don't know the, are we doing the redevelopment too? I don't know the...
I don't know them.
Okay.
And we'll do the interviews next week for the vacant spots, Heather?
ABC.
ABC.
I misread that, that's the Alton board. But we haven't met with that person either, so...
We haven't, so we, yeah, we have to, we have to meet with them, but...
Is it possible, if any of those, if you have meetings with those people, for me to sit in that room and just look in?
Yeah, I don't have a problem. I mean, do you guys got a problem with this issue?
I actually was gonna suggest it, but I didn't know what her time was.
Once again, I apologize to everybody out there that has submitted their interest in these positions. I dropped the ball. We're gonna skip the highway for just a moment. Department heads, elected officials.
That was the only thing I was gonna ask, but you guys just covered mine.
Good, and we're gonna get out of here, we got six, Greg's got three minutes to speak. Okay, Greg, before you come up, I'd like to, and you know I'm not gonna remember your name at all, but I'd like to, uh, bring up HWC to the table, and you can introduce yourselves, because I know your face, but I'm not gonna tell her by your name.
Yeah, so that's okay. Hi, we've got two first names, so I'm Lori Christie with HWC, and nice to meet you, and, and with me this evening is John Lukak and Jacob Eisenberg, we've actually talked to Greg, it's minor two. Uh, we're an engineering firm.
Thank you, sir.
Our offices are in Indianapolis, Indiana, but we have offices in Terre Haute and other locations around the state of Indiana. Uh, we're here just to introduce ourselves this evening to you, I think you kind of know us a little bit, oh, did you get a load of the book?
I want Greg to have one of those super ton.
Okay, yeah, we're getting them, yeah.
Thank you.
And, uh, we, we started talking to Greg last year a little bit, uh, about some of your bridges and understanding that the county has limited resources, and then the spring when the floods came, and there were some bridges that you were kind of concerned about, and we had submitted kind of non-call agreement, maybe to look at some of those, and now you've got your countywide bridge inspection, RFP, which is maybe through federal government, state, and OHS, we let Jacob talk a little bit about that. So, we are going to submit on that, I know Greg at one time had asked Jacob and I, what, you know, you guys haven't really submitted on these before, and we kind of explained to Greg that, you know, we try to gauge where we have the best advantage maybe to come in, and, and we didn't feel like in the county we had an opportunity to work with you before, but we're very interested in working with you now. Uh, we think with the change of leadership and your, uh, willingness to kind of look at the future, uh, be proactive, and look at different innovative financing and funding, and that's something that we specialize in. Uh, we think it would be a very good match, we'd like to partner with you. So Jacob, I'm gonna let you talk a little bit, and about what you passed out to them, and explain a little bit about what the countywide bridge inspection is, I know Greg knows it well, but...
Good, Laura. Um, I'm Jacob Eisenberg, I'm the structural department manager, about eighty percent, ninety percent of what my team does is bridge related, but we also do other structural elements like wastewater treatment plants, so. Um, I've been with HWC for twelve, going on thirteen years now. Um, and so from that time, I went from a group of three guys to a team of eight now, and two other guys that I've, uh, kind of split between other departments, depending on what they're able to do. And so then what I've given you today is kind of our company summary for just our statement of qualifications in terms of transportation. Uh, HWC is a very multi-disciplined company, um, with all sorts of different groups, economic development, landscaping, water, wastewater, stormwater. Um, so we're just kind of one piece of a much larger, uh, pie, and then that insert page, kind, um, the single page insert, a loose link one, that on the backside will give you a broader sense of all of the services that HWC has. More, taking longer to go through than what time you have this evening, so. Um, and then with that, yes, so with, um, this is my partner in crime, per se, um, John Lukak, and give you two minutes to introduce yourself.
You're the guy that's gonna take all the responsibility, correct?
Yeah.
All the blame.
Yeah.
None of the credit.
Yeah, as they both mentioned, we just appreciate the opportunity and, uh, you know, your consideration, we send, submitting a LOI for your county, uh, bridge inventory. Uh, myself, I've been in the industry about twenty years, eighteen years of that, I've been heavily involved with bridge design and inspection. Um, at one point I managed a quality assurance, quality control contract for bridge inspection for the whole state of Indiana, over consultants for county work, and even over state inspectors for the state side. So I've seen a wide range of, uh, you know, bridge inspection techniques over the whole state of Indiana, in addition to managing bridge inventories and doing them myself, so, um, just, you'll see that in the qualification information and the LOI, but again, we just, uh, wanted to introduce ourselves and appreciate your consideration.
Quick question?
Yeah.
Nothing too small, nothing too big?
Yeah, not at all. We, uh, we actually specialize in working, uh, with local communities such as yourself. Jacob's got extensive, um, experience in both small counties and large counties as well, but he's also been helping manage, uh, White County inventory, not only from inspection side, but also budgetary side, and he can always, uh, elaborate more on that if, if you want, if you're interested.
Are you guys working with Putnam County?
Yes.
Uh, we're starting to.
Yep.
Yeah, well, I've heard. I've heard some good stuff.
Yeah, no, we haven't done their bridge inspections.
No, but you've been.
Been working with them, yeah.
Yes.
And we actually helped them, so Putnam County and Boone County are the only two counties so far that have done a full road safety audit program, which qualifies you for additional funding, and our HWC office did work with Putnam County and finished that up about two years ago, worked with the highway superintendent, and they do not have a county engineer either right now, so uh, we worked heavily with their highway department, because we figured the superintendent really knows everything about uh, the school departments, the cities and towns, I mean, we really worked with them, and then that made them eligible to qualify for highway safety improvement fundings, and we worked closely with them as well, and both Jacob and John have excellent relationships.
Good. And, I'm gonna ask you a question, and of course, I, I get a little forgetful, because I've only get like a hundred emails a day.
Just that all.
You ever tell? You may have sent this to me, or you may not, I'll go back and look. Did you send us a spreadsheet of cost? Did you send that to me in an email?
He's talking about that on-call agreement and the, our hourly rates.
Back in the spring when you had your floods and, and you guys were in need, potentially, we were looking for some safety inspections, so, um, we went through and provided a on-call agreement that would be hourly, not to exceed billing basis, so whatever basically the work done, um, up to the limit, that's what it was gonna get charged. And that was in part for the safety inspection, so that I think we were gonna explore the FEMA fund, I think, for that spread.
Then there's...
So, that, that work would be outside of what you currently, the RFP currently upposted for that, as we refer to as the countywide bridge inspection program.
Do you have rates, and I'm, I'm not an English major, I don't mean, I heard that. You got till end of the year, boss, anyway. Is there a breakdown of like, what it costs to come over here, what it costs to send emails, or text messages, or office work and stuff? Do you have a breakdown, is that in that package as well, or can you send me that, something?
Uh, you would pretty much be the last page of that contract, would be, what, would be our, um, billing rates on an hourly basis?
That's what I was asking for, I think.
And that's, and that's in there, and then for your countywide bridge inspection, since it's a receiving federal funds, that's a contract negotiated according to the, um, federal accounting regulation rules.
Sure.
That end up making just...
Okay.
So those are two different ways that you can kind of do things, but...
Well, I'm, uh, you know, and I'm not here, I'm not here to ban on nobody, I, I don't do that, well, I do, if I need to. But, I, I appreciate this commission here, because we've talked about it, you know? Sometimes if you ain't careful, you get all your eggs on the basket. And I'm not saying nothing bad about nobody. Sometimes you gotta broaden your horizons, look outside the scope, and maybe just in general, uh, take a look around and see who else is in, playing the same game. You know, I think that's, that's where we're at with a lot of things going on in county, and these two guys got a whole lot better heads on their shoulders than I do, and they brought it up, and said, hey, let's, um, let's broaden our scope here. Let's talk to some people. Kind of like what we're doing with other programs, you know, so I appreciate you as being here and, um, reviewing stuff, and I'm glad you're gonna put in uh, your, your dead force and stuff like that, because, um, it, it's, it's just a good thing to have as many players as possible you have, so you have a field to choose from, and, and you agree? Commissioners, you guys are a lot of...
Couple of things, just, that popped in my head, so we have a rather extensive road that comes from out here in town and goes all the way to North two thirty-one, Rocky Hill, I don't know if you know it or not. That road's rough, we're looking at trying to redo it at some point in its entirety. There's gonna be some structural issues with hillsides and things, is that, is that in your battling with as well, or is that outside of? Is that, you know, there's gonna be some stabilization, stabilization has to be done on the high side. Uh, two cut ditches in to get the water on the other side of it, that kind of thing, so that's, that's all in your scope, right?
How many, how many miles?
How long is Rocky Hill?
Seven.
Seven?
So, the, the road segment you're thinking about fixing is about seven miles long?
Well, the whole road is seven miles long, that section through there is probably... Well, the whole road is seven miles long. That section through there is probably three, two that has the high side.
Well, it is, but I, you know, I just, I talked to the other commissioner and I think if we're going to have a study done on the road, we should pass down the entire road.
End to end.
From Spencer all the way to the highway.
All the way, all the way to 231?
So basically the city limits all the way to 231, Carter.
Absolutely.
Seven miles. Obviously, we've admitted that out. It's a one know if that's something you had.
Yes, that's something I've had for White County. They had a road segment that had some history of accidents. When we actually got to the study and checked the geometry, the hills were technically safe for ten miles an hour. So then we kind of took from what was just a bridge to a road project more or less and then took care of that. That all started with the countywide inspection saying the bridge is due, turned into a study, can analyze and program and plan how much it would cost to fix all seven tenths of a mile. Went into designing it and ultimately built it. That took beautiful years.
So when you talk about looking at roads, countywide as well, you could grade them or what, what do you call the program?
You do the phaser.
Phaser, that's it. Okay, phaser scale?
And haven't they lowered that? Or didn't they lower the phaser scale?
No.
No, it's still the same?
The phaser rating system has changed.
Phaser change is still, okay.
What they lowered is the community crossing matching grants. Maybe you're thinking about that.
They definitely did that.
They've done that, yeah.
Yeah, they keep taking money.
I thought the phaser scale was changing. I read too much stuff.
Well, there's a lot to go over, but yeah.
Well, it's why you have us.
Yeah.
To help answer those questions.
So do you hire engineers to come and help dissect some of the major road problem or do you have?
John, why are you here?
Yeah, there's.
We're not missing that one.
When you call, everybody calls us.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the only non-engineer.
That's one thing I want to iterate to you, Greg. You get promoted from all sorts of firms. So the business folks, the selling folks are the ones who show up within our context, John and I, in terms of that countywide inspection. John will be your inspector, looking at all hundred and twelve bridges. He'd be your point of contact, project manager, responsible for all the buildings. And then as he needs help, I would be helping him, depending on schedules, to make sure everything's done because we got a hundred and twelve bridges. Your compliance month with INDOT is November, so you gotta go visit a hundred and twelve in the month of November.
I thought they were on the cycle where you only did so many a year though. Was that not the case?
Every, you have to do all of them every two years.
Every two years.
Some of them that you do every year. Have to be done every year.
Okay, yeah. I knew there was something here.
Yep.
And then there was some discussion when we were riding around, look at the roads about LTAP through Purdue.
Yep.
And maybe getting some help from them. Are you familiar with that?
Yep.
And is that a connection that you guys make or that we make or?
We would help put you in connection with them depending on what you need. And then ultimately, we would probably hand off that task between you and them. But we know, I mean, I know Connor, I used to work with Jennifer Sharpie, yes, we.
Yeah, we know them pretty well.
They're engineers that we've worked with across the past couple of decades, so.
That's good.
Jim Johnson, I brought up that, that's right, Jim Johnson?
Yeah.
I brought up that, that's why we're riding around. So we just wanted to know, or I wanted to know if that's something you're familiar with and if that's something you've utilized before. So if it is, that's great. That's just another resource. It sounds like it's pretty, they told us it's free. I don't know if that's true or not.
Some of their services are.
Okay.
If they have the time, that's, that's what they'll tell you.
And that's a really good number for one county is free. That's, that's what we like, so.
That's a good four letter word. Yeah, I actually worked with Laura Slusher, Manhattan Road, Putnam County, did a road safety audit about nine years ago. And like I said, if they're available and can work with you, but they, they'll help a lot and they're a wonderful resources, but they're spread statewide. So we kind of try to work with them and use what we can of their services and then supplement them.
Okay.
Well, I think Laura said when I talked to you that, I'll tell you right now, I'm a commissioner, but I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed. We don't know. Everybody agrees with you. But the, the fact of it is, is, you know, we, we have to have some outside resources. And I think we've kind of limited ourselves to just a certain group. And we need to expand our horizons because we need to learn, Greg needs to learn, we all need to learn, but we need, we need those resources that you talked about to help. Because every, probably every county is about the same, you know. Money's critical. And with the, with the SB one and all the taxes, we don't know what's coming up. We still gotta answer to the taxpayers. They want roads fixed and the bridges, and we want our roads fixed, we want our bridges fixed. So if we can tap into some other resources that we haven't ever tapped into, that's what we need to do. But we, we're still, we're gonna do it right.
Yeah, well, I think we just bring a fresh perspective, obviously. We aren't tied into anything. We have not looked at your bridges extensively. So when John and his team looks at it, they're looking at it with a fresh eye, a fresh perspective. And the other thing that we're very good at is trying to find every funding source that we can. And, you know, everybody thinks there's lots of grant money out there. Well, it's really, there isn't a lot of grant money. I will always say it's not free money. Grant money is usually it's an eighty, twenty or there's a, but we try to maximize and leverage that for as best we can. But we'll be honest and, and just guide you as best we can. So we appreciate the opportunity this evening. We didn't mean to hijack the meeting.
You take it the longest you want. We got all day.
Well, these guys don't think.
Is your contact information here, I'm assuming?
Yeah, you guys got cards?
Yeah, let's get my card and I'll get my card. Yeah.
You guys sing, I'm not sure. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My cell phone's out there.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, appreciate you.
John must be new because his picture ain't in the.
What?
You're on your picture, not above. What's that mean? You're an outcast or something?
Probably put only department managers in there.
I do, but I'll tell you no. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you very much. Public comment? Yes, sir, Becker. I know you've been here all night, so that you come on.
My name's Tom Hudson and I live out on Pottersville Road. And I just wanted to bring up some hazards that I've not seen getting addressed since the storms. You know, the trees were cut out of the road, but they're like right on the edge of the blacktop is where the blunt end of all these logs are. And the weeds are growing up so tall and hanging out into the road. So a lot of places on River Road and Pottersville, it's almost down to one lane. And if you accidentally get off the edge, you don't know where those big stumps and tree logs are at. I just wondered if the county had money to go out and mow the edges of the roads and clean up the dangerous debris.
I will turn this over to the county highway superintendent. He's sitting right here. Ask him and he can answer this question.
I don't know if you guys have ever seen Final Destination, the movie, but it's, when you're driving down the road and see all those logs sticking out and everything's sticking there, it's almost, it's dangerous.
Well, I, I, I did see a clip of a news feed a few days ago. I didn't really wanna see the clip, but I did anyway, where you're talking about where somebody was driving down a county road and that's not, nothing against the superintendent, but happened exactly what you said. And it killed a passenger in the car. Because it, it was, you know, it was cut back, but it was kind of like right to the edge.
Yeah.
Well, when they met the other car, now, I'm not saying that he's going too fast, what he's going to, it's irrelevant.
Right.
But, you know.
There is, there is no grace. If you get off the blacktop, you don't know what you're gonna hit when you get into those weeds. You know, and, and people are driving forty to seventy thousand dollar vehicles and if you have to get over in your lane because someone else is coming, you're just scratching up the side of your car and everything else.
I'll let Greg Meltman answer that question for you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Well, gentlemen, as you all know, you know how many people have, and I lost another one this week. We have one motorhome that we run every day. The van never gets out of it, but with over six hundred miles of road, you double that, that's twelve hundred miles of road we're trying to get over. This week, we ran every mower that we've got. The tip to Pretford Community Crossing. And the ditching work that we've been given and the one mower is the only one running all the time. Everyone in this room is aware that we're so far behind, we're hit.
Yep.
I'm not asking, that, that's the facts that there are. My guys never say no. In fact, I've got three out right now. I can call them seven days a week. I'm working the tar out of them. But with what we have, the guys that we have, I can only do so much a day.
I understand. So with that being, and I know we've got, what, thirteen employees, something like that?
Yes.
Yes or no? But any of them don't or do? You shaking your head no? I thought you were saying?
No, no.
Okay. So, and I know money's tied, everything is always tied, but I don't wanna get away from your question because it's very important. And then we know we have Joe White who's working on Hyden Hancock School Road this week. He's doing some trimming and cutting the logs. And, you know, he gave us that quote to do that. He's working on that. Do we need to look at finding an outsource of a couple other avenues, Greg, to do some mowing and cutting and cleaning some of the debris out of the ditches?
With no, no more folks than we have to work, it'd be like asking, me coming to you and asking for a contractor to do work, to work on a color. But I have to sit in the same room and say, okay, we can do that, but we're not gonna pull that money from.
Yeah, well, yes.
I would say that would help them physically.
Okay. I think it's, I think it's something we need to look at, gentlemen. I mean, we, we're down to thirteen employees and they can only do so much. And I'll take away from your necessity out there, sir. And what's, what was your name again?
My name is Tom Hudson. I live out here on Pottersville Road and I drive Pottersville on River Road every day to go back and forth to work. And, and the road is pretty heavily traveled. And River Road is especially mad.
Could I, could I, would you care to give me your phone?
I'm sorry.
Your phone number, Tom? Would you kind of?
My phone number is eight one two three six zero one eight nine three.
Okay. And I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna go out there and look at it myself and stuff, but.
Yeah, I live three miles from the pork house out on Pottersville. Now, I don't know how bad the road is past my house, but I know right before you, like when you were P ridges, you know, you guys put the twenty-five mile an hour signs, be limited to slow people down through there. There's big sticks and I actually had to stop yesterday on the way home when we had that little short storm coming through. Cause a tree fell down the road and, and me and another guy grabbed it, moved it as far as we could and get it out of the way. I'm about to the point of getting a chainsaw and carrying it with me just so we get home.
And we're not trying to.
Oh, I know you're not.
Doggy it all.
I just kept hoping to see some, something, you know, but it just seemed like every storm we have or another limb comes down, it's, it's just cut off to the edge of the road. You know, it's not even cut back two feet. I mean, while they're there, I would have thought you at least take another five minutes and go over another two feet and get it away from the edge of the road.
Yeah, that's, that's been a topic of discussion, so. And I'll let Greg look, Greg look at it when you can. I know you're busy to see and, and try to find out maybe when your guys are gonna be in that area. I don't know, Greg, when you, when you set up to go. But I do think fellow commissioners that.
Well, I'm sorry, and I will say this. I know the public is frustrated with nothing getting done, but your men and women that work for you are frustrated too. Because we're trying to do our job and the public's so frustrated with us, we get stopped in the middle of the road and we can't come on because we have citizens so angry that this isn't getting done or the call that they, they came in. If your employees are taking a beating out here just trying to do their job along the road because the citizens are, are upset. And, and I understand it, but, but that's what we're faced with.
And, and, and I, I understand it too wholeheartedly and we don't wanna draw from some of the issues that we've had in the past. You know, with our, our, our paying, using our twenty twenty-five budget to pay twenty twenty-four claims has cost us. We're in trouble. And I, I think the public knows that and stuff like that, so we're getting, we're getting that rectified slowly but surely. But it's been a casualty. It's been a major casualty for the community, a major loss to the community. And right now, the funds are extremely limited to what we do have. But we are approaching the council next week with a, with a budget that I feel confident in. Now, does that satisfy for this year? No. We are going to have to utilize the money we have, sir, and I'll just point out blank to you what money we have and what money maybe that we can get from the council as well to help fund some of this stuff. And, and, you know, with the short staff that we have, we, we couldn't even make payroll. That's how close the money was tied. So we've had to let go and lay off. It's unfortunate, but it's just reality that we got to this point, that we're here. But we are getting better, but it doesn't take away from your needs, sir.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate all that. I'm just concerned about the safety of the road more than anything, you know. The weeds are bad, but the, the logs that are hit in there is the worst thing. I mean, it's gonna cause a major accident.
I'll, I'll go out in the morning myself and take a look. And Greg, I don't know what your, your schedule is either. But the commissioners, I, I think that all three of us need to do diligence to try to find some people, local people in our county that are willing to come out and help clean up some of these ditches, mow for us and trim some trees. We got one guy doing that right now. It's kind of a test thing. But we have.
I'm gonna mow the hung off the side on a tractor. I wouldn't care to go up and down the road and mow, you know. You can't run a tractor with a bush hog straight behind you in the ditch because you don't know how far it's gonna drop down or anything else.
Been there and done that. Wind up in a creek, you know, so. But I'll be out there tomorrow, sir. And Greg will get out there as soon as he can. Just take a look, see. And I don't, like I said, I don't know when you guys are gonna be out that way. But I asked the, the other two commissioners to be looking in your area. Whether your area, my area, doesn't make any difference for some, for some local residents who can help us attack, attack some of these problems here.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I've been out there, so you know we're actually working on phrase building out and we're giving that direction.
Well, they're close.
They're close.
Any other public comment? Yes, there he is.
Uh, just wanna say a couple of things. One is that I really appreciate Greg taking the time to look at Hyden Road last year. He's the only superintendent that's ever actually come out and seen it and said, yeah, this section's gotta be paved. Like he listened and I really appreciate it. I guess my main question is, can the commissioners prioritize Hyden Road's quarter mile pavement that was voted on last year before we paved seven miles of rock? I bet it doesn't need to be everywhere coming from.
I, I know, yeah. It, it, this was voted on last year by the board of commissioners to pave that quarter mile. It wasn't Kevin. Do we have a cost?
Uh, we did at the time. I can't tell you right off the top of my head, but yes.
My, here's my suggestion. You guys jump right in. Bring us that cost the next meeting once it's gonna cost to pay back.
Yes, sir.
Now, I know we're not, we're not at the position to pave that, but maybe we can get some of our fellow pavers, paving people. If they're gonna be in the area somewhere close, maybe they have time to come and pave a quarter mile road for us.
Well, the other major thing that needs to go on there, commissioners, it's just not the asphalt that is a bonus to the situation. But we've got to get the ditching crew out there. There needs to be some. that is a bonus to the situation, but we've got to get the ditching crew out there. There needs to be some culvert replaced. The ditch should be rebuilt on that area and that road before everyone else is at fault though.
Glad you said that.
That is part of the original plan.
Okay.
Fix that. Kevin, Kevin and I have actually spoken about that.
Yeah.
So that has to be done.
Okay, so we.
Before we lay one ounce out of it.
Well, I'm, I'm glad you said that because we've been sitting up here for months saying we're not paving nothing until we ditch the culvert. So, what was that? You okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
So I'm glad you said that. So bring us the cost of what the ditching culvert, how much that's going to be plus the asphalt.
Yes sir.
Then we can go from there Kevin.
That's great. I mean, I understand the budgetary issues, floods, it gets pushed back.
Yep.
I just want to make sure it's still in the.
But you know, you was, but if it was voted on last year, even though we're not the same board of commissioners, it doesn't change your perspective of what you was told is going to be done.
Yes, thank you.
And this board has, we need to honor what we've told our citizens to the very best of our ability, so you get us that cost on that. We'll see where we, what we can do.
When's the next meeting?
Next, next, next February. No. September fourth.
Is that one in the morning?
Yes, in the morning. We'll have cookies. Okay. So, by the way Kevin has been absolutely wonderful neighbor to us in distance. A nicest neighbor we could possibly have and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
And my granddaughter told me to tell you hi. Okay, any other public comment? County Highway.
Commissioners, I think you're all aware, but we had a meeting with, being on Tuesday regarding the March floods. Chad and I divided up and we took those individuals on a tour of most of those locations that already looked at and recorded. I spent pretty much the last two days and, and even my office staff getting FEMA documents they need. They'll, they'll get hold of us. This is what we need, so. A lot of what's been going on right now is to try to get re-personed for some of the things that we, the things that we've had to do and Sam knows and understands now. There's kind of two different pots of money. Money to come in for repair of what we, of what we've already done. Some of it's just bad dating, but, but that. There's a second that comes along that is, that's mitigation to try to keep this problem happy again, happy again. Fortunately enough, we had both teams on the ground at the same time, so we, we had the team that helped us regroup money and a mitigation team on the ground at the same time. This week. I know that we're still in town today, but we're in constant communication. I have gotten with contractors and to reach out on some of the smaller jobs. Let me put in a scope work on those very soon to get those to them on some of the repair mitigation issues. So that is taking a great deal of time right now, but whatever they need, when they want to be, just stop and get it for them.
And that's important to do, that's very important.
And, you know, I always think this board of commissioners and everybody needs to know that the amount of folks that I've not seen in Owen County from, you know, from senators to our governor have been in Owen County to look at our plight, so.
Yes.
This, this board caused that to happen, so I thank you for that. We've got a lot of attention. It was because of your diligence and work to get them here back.
Well, I want to, and really I want to, I want to give Commissioner, Commissioner Risk a shout out because he's made a lot of things happen.
Yes he has.
And, you know, and thank you for that. He's got the attention of a lot of state people as well as his, his wife, you know, so shout out to both of them because they've brought a lot of people down here. Been kind of exciting a little bit to see some of those people show up.
Well, the easiest way for me to describe David to no offense is like that old ham dog will get off that track. He gets on and he goes stop these things right on.
Yeah, it's like a whole bone ham sandwich.
And, and I really appreciate it. Kelly Road and Pleasant View have been ditched. The culverts are in and those are both CCMG roads. We're ready to turn that over and be paving. EMB has indicated that they will be here on Wednesday whether preventing to start probably a couple of day project on each road. I have spoke with the Amish community, their executive presence. They know that that's a hurry. And they've all been notified by their hotline. I've knocked on the doors. I, there's a couple of local businesses out there and they are aware so we can limit the traffic. I have asked the Amish community if they will be assigned. You just keep the horse drawn traffic off of the new road for twenty-four hours.
That'd be good because you know that's an issue we're going to have to be addressing here in the future. But the Amish enough to get some love, great people. About their buggies and cleats and stuff being on the, on the road.
Well, as far, I mean, we, we do have a bridge in regard to the certain horseshoes that they could use and I have, I, I am quite positive that the community is using no drill tech. They're using shoes with four of them on them. It still causes issues, but not the issues of drill tech.
Okay, good.
We've had a ditching project going on on Graham Road. We'll be finishing up that tomorrow. It was just a short project to solve a major problem in regard to erosion. We'll be pulling out of there tomorrow and that crew will be going to Freedom Road, so we'll be able to prep it for CCMV. And we should be able to get it done in two weeks and we'll be, we'll be good there.
Okay.
Lot of work to do, but I've got a crew that is really diligent that they were putting in two and three pipes a day, so.
Have we addressed Schooling Road yet?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
The, the, Schooling Road has more than one issue.
That issue that we was at?
The issue that you and I have looked at, yes, it has been repaired.
Okay, good.
It was repaired the following week.
I, I thought it was, but I can't keep up. I just can't keep up.
There is, there is another issue on Schooling Road that we're going to have to make a repair to. There is a old concrete box culvert. And a couple of culverts that attach to that old concrete box. Guys, I can't tell you why they did it that way, but they did and we've got that all ninety-three quarters going to happen. We've got to replace it.
Good, good. How are you? I'd like to hear more work. Uh, how many paving contractors do we have? EMB?
Oh, my gosh, the list go.
Okay.
ED, there's small paving contractors, there's the big paving contractors like you talked about. There's, there's EMB, there is.
What contractor?
Reeve Riley that has given us bids, Wallace Brothers, Lynch Brothers, some of the smaller companies I've talked to. It depends on what's been done. There's been many give us bids to work.
Okay. I would like to sometime here in the near future, I'd like to meet in an administrative meeting with the board of commissioners and you and every paving contractor that's interested in doing some work here in the county.
Yeah, you tell me when and I'll reach out.
I'll reach out to these commissioners. We'll find a date. I think there's some things we, we, some scope of work that we need to put our heads together on and see what we can do to help, to help the cause and.
And I think you'll see a lot.
Good. Good, so commissioners helped remind me to facilitate and get together and meet about that. I, I don't mean to interrupt you Greg, so how many guys are you down to? Thirteen?
Yes.
Full staff is what?
Twenty-two.
You said you lost one this week. Are you going to replace that person or try to?
Uh, I, I've spoken to David some about it, but we haven't made any determination yet in regard to that.
What did that person do for you?
He was a operator.
An operator, okay.
So Sheila.
He, he gave me his two weeks and he, um, so it would be, I've got.
You've got a few more weeks.
Two more weeks, but.
Not that we have Sheila because you have nothing else to do. And then I think the board of commissioners needs to give Sheila and ask Sheila where we at with our payroll and what it would be like if we, you know, we brought back, you know, replaced this one or brought back two or whatever. You know, we got plenty of work to do and stuff like that, but Sheila, whenever we get time, can we kind of look at that and see where we'd be? How much we, how much we would have for the, through the end of the year?
Even still have the pay that was already there.
We're not going to leave it, no, so. I, I say go ahead and find somebody to replace that one. Ask me personally. Then let us look at the numbers on the payroll side of things and see if we can maybe add another one. We got plenty of work to do. We just need to make sure we have the funding to get the bill to pay for it.
Thank you.
So can an operator, are they able to do the mowing?
Yeah, gentlemen, it's, as far as I'm concerned, if you're an operator in highway department, especially now that means you can operate shovel and broom with that road breaker. And in general, the folks that I have there are all trained enough to run multiple machines and, and labor also.
Well, I mean, the reason I ask, I've gotten some emails this week about other roads where mowing is the issue. And if we're, if we're down an operator and that since we have someone we can't put in a mower and we've replaced that person and we're talking about getting another one, maybe mowing is the type of person we wouldn't want to get since that's where we're short and, you know, as these weeds grow like they do this time of year and they don't get any better, it's going to get worse, so. Just thinking out loud. I, I don't know what's available, what you can get and all that. I just want to know who can operate a mower. Sounds like everyone you have.
Everyone I have. I mean, I've even had the mechanics out, out of the shop and they, we decided mow this week, put everybody out, so both mechanics have been out in mowers this week.
How many mowers do we have?
Uh, we have three right now that are usable. We could, would have two others available, but we have a tractor with clutch out of it, or seventy-six ten needs clutch. Part of that that David is aware of and then the new Holland, the other mow trim, as y'all know, I presented that earlier. We don't know until that tractor's split, but it could be up to a forty thousand dollar fix on that tractor if we have to work.
What's the cost to split it?
Uh, a minimum of six thousand dollars split.
Lord Jesus, we need some help.
So, it, it, it's in the mow, mow trim is important too. That one has a nineteen foot reach, the John here that we're running right now. Says it has twenty-five, but really more realistically, by the time you get yourself on a road where you can mow, it's about a twenty foot reach, but with limbs and brush the way they are right now, it would be advantageous to have both mowers running, but you know, just getting the weeds cut off the side of the road is helping immensely with the other mowers.
Can I ask you a legal question?
You sure can.
Is it permissible for county commissioners to operate county equipment?
Sure.
Okay. I just want to make sure in case if I had a day or two I could go mow, I could go mow.
Sure.
That's been asked in the past and our insurance company, Mayor John Parmley, has said yes because you're covered under the umbrella clause.
I kind of thought it was, but you know, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to think outside the box.
Former Commissioner Williamson used to do that a lot, so yes, we, we had.
If I had a day or two that I could commit to mowing side of the roads, I'm not too good to go mow.
I find you a tractor worth an air conditioner commissioner.
You going to give me a crash course, no pun intended? I, I can do it with the best of them, but.
Well, I, I mean, you got to think outside the box. We'll figure out what our funding is and what we have to see what we can do to facilitate maybe.
I find the best with the mowing and I know is slow and steady.
Wins the race.
It, it does, the, if you're going fast, you know, maybe cover the ground with that one little step here, it's much up, so slow and steady, keep them moving.
Good.
Yeah, because you don't always know what's.
Anything else Greg?
If you look at your screens in front of you, I've got the eleven seventy-six, which is where payroll is coming from. They're averaging a little less than fifty thousand dollars a month right now.
Why are you turning on?
In payroll, I think yours is broke.
Yours is probably not broke yet.
Mine's broke. Go ahead and look at it.
It's broke. In the meantime, you currently, your cash balance is three oh seven, so you have plenty to keep the person you have. You'll be bringing in about a hundred and forty-five thousand a month for another four months. Do I feel comfortable in saying that you could hire a second person in there and still make payroll?
Feel pretty good about that.
Because you've got like eighty or over eighty thousand a month down again right now, which is.
Yeah, I can. Okay, all right, yeah, Norm, go ahead.
And I think the only other thing that we were watching with those guys who had these storms and, you know, I spoke to David about the other day about the amount of times that we have to get out a week, but it's not been horrible lately, but we's in general, guys, I've got somebody out every day of the week.
Seems like it.
And, you know, they get it, a, a minimum of two hours, you know, just to go out, but that being said, I knew where it was. Where is it now, if I can recall?
I think it's around eighty-nine. I haven't looked at this paper.
Prior to, prior to this payroll, we were close to only nine thousand dollars left. I, in general, that would get us through the end of the year, but boy, these guys, this year's pretty tough one.
That's why they've had a lot of storms, so. So if you go to replace the operator, are you going to, would you, Norm, go ahead with your idea, Norm.
So I think we've replaced the one he's losing in two weeks and we hire an additional one. If the money, and the money looks right, I mean, Sheila knows better than I do. If she feels comfortable with what we've got coming in and what we've got going out, then we get that extra mower on the, on the road as soon as we can is my feeling on it. I mean.
Would you, would you be hiring two operators then? That way the operator can, because if you hire labor, they're limited.
That's correct.
We hire two operators, operator can shovel, operate, mow, trim.
Do whatever I ask you to do. Operate means operate whatever you got.
And you're, you're confident, you feel good about that too?
Again, you're bringing in a hundred and forty thousand right at that and you got four more months of those. You've already got your eighty thousand for this month, so.
And, and really, we're only, we're, I mean, we're replacing somebody that's already there anyway. So we're just bringing on, and really it's not even an additional purpose because we's budgeted for twenty-two. So, lay her out there, Norm.
Does that need to be a motion?
Yes.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we replace the one that just turned in the two week notice and hire an additional operator. All right, so I'll make a motion that we replace the one that just turned in the two-week notice and hire an additional operator, with an eye toward mowing, and when we get to snow time, Dave tells me that person can operate a snow plow as well, so that's my motion.
So you're saying hiring two operators, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second that. All favor, I, real.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is shot the hour.
Now, do you have somebody you've laid off that could step into that role, or? I mean, are you, if they're available?
I, I don't know that anybody is.
Okay.
And we are hiring operators.
That is correct.
Two operators. Just make sure that's, that's, that is clear. What else you got, anything?
Uh, it's just.
What's that?
Oh. Q. Not Cataract Road.
Yeah, gentlemen, Q. Not Cataract Road is back open.
Looks good.
I know.
Outstanding job.
Went up and expected, uh, there is one tree, I spoke to him about it, we contacted R E M C about cutting that. I didn't tell them if they would cut that for us, we, we would clean it up. If we cut it and put it in the tree, it would also be an issue for car ground. I just couldn't get them up there fast enough for it to give it up.
Well, they got the trucks for it and equipment, so.
Um, did, I was up there before. Is it paved too, or no? Not yet?
It, it is not paved yet. Uh, although it's the, the compaction, we compacted to the ninety percentile. I, I don't think it's going to, um, you know, settle much at all, but, uh, my suggestion is wait till, wait late fall or next spring, and lay the asphalt.
Okay. You know, that's not my bailin', so I, I just wanted to ask, cause when I was up there, it still grabbed one of them, it sounds like it still is, but at least it's back open and.
And hats off to Fender, they worked the weekend.
Really good job on that.
And how'd you recover from the bee sting? Your little environmental hazard?
You know, well, guys, that was quite the experience.
Anybody videotaping or anything?
I don't like to see.
Uh, I tell you what, they bothered me like an old hen, but they, um, I, I'm not, um, I've never been allergic, but we carried bee sting again, so I've got a guy that's named T. Hit me with an epi pen and then gave me another Benadryl to put an elephant to sleep, and I slept in a chair that afternoon for five hours.
And you brought something up that I wanna make sure that units have, you know, first aid kits?
Yes.
The best, not a Band-Aid box.
We, we do with the machines, uh, gentlemen, now that we don't have the uniform company, but Dina, I actually spoke about that.
Today.
Today. Um, we need a new first aid kit from the shop. Brought one out of one of the trucks, but I, we, we need to add one for that. Otherwise, yes, we have top-of-line first aid kits.
Get with Chris Lunchford? And he'll be the guy that could facilitate where to get the best first aid kit. Make sure units have epi pens?
Yes.
I don't know how you keep them on the service trucks, supervisor trucks, or keep them on every truck. I don't know how many people.
They, they run every truck.
Make sure, make.
Run every truck, you know.
Make sure you have them, make sure everybody knows how to use them.
Everybody, Health Department, uh, helped train us, they helped us, uh, train.
Good.
Majorly, uh, so, I mean, Christine's crew has kept us up the snuff on the training.
Like I just kinda pictured you when you was getting stung, and I wasn't laughing, Greg.
Like I said, I was just a Batman running, and they didn't know what was happening.
I could see this going, but anyway, so, I'm glad you're okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. Auditor?
Hi, we've got, we received eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-dollar HFI for the chiller fixes. We're down to twelve thousand in your equipment repair, and I just want you to be aware we're taking it out. And, and the generator stuff will be coming out there as well. So we just have thirty thousand dollars left. You're making some fun for the rest of the year, unless you wanna both take us somewhere else.
No, this, this page.
Did they? Was that to take care of the problem on the third floor, or was that something else?
This is the chillers.
Just the chillers, okay.
Yeah, all right. Go ahead, then ask me. We have got, how many maintenance people, how many applications do we have for the maintenance position?
Three.
We need to review those. I've looked at them, but, um, we need to review them, okay? That's all we have. Um, I don't know what the council's gonna do, uh, at their meeting with the pay increase for the maintenance position. Bill, you own a job, another job. Dale, you're retired, you ain't doing nothing. How about a maintenance position?
I've got a full-time position at home.
Anyway, we're struggling to find a, a, a maintenance person for the county. It's a struggle. But Bill, you might wanna write this in your notes, sir. That when it comes to this jail project, that we need to make sure that we speak to the council about when this starts, we need a maintenance person on the ground when this first gets started.
Absolutely.
From, from the get-go. Know where the sewer, the water, all that's going to be. And it's, it's my goal, I'm, I'm hoping that we have a maintenance person for this facility just in its entirety. Not a county maintenance person. Somebody to maintain this project, cause if we don't, we're just kicking ourselves in the foot, so. Commissioners? Mr. Attorney, do you have anything?
I do not.
You have your blue sheets in front of you, which is your monthly financial statement from the treasurer. Questions?
I don't. Is that it for you? I do have one more quick thing I want to address. How many of you are familiar with Kathleen's Gymnastics? They've been a, a, a source of, um, I don't know, I don't, I'm, I'm not a good English person. They have, um, I'm gonna read something to you. We're writing to inform you to, we are writing to you from Kathleen's Gymnastics and Kids Camp. We have been blessed to call the Armory building our home for over ten years. We started renting the building on March first, two thousand and thirteen. Gymnastics is just a small part of many amazing programs that we offer our facility. We love to share with you the various programs we have. We have over a hundred recreational gymnastic students. We have thirty-five competitive gymnastics, thirty-five competitive gymnasts. We have six mommy-and-me families. We have thirty-five boys who participate in ninja classes. We have twenty-five students enrolled in dance classes. We have twelve families who rely on us for full-time childcare during school year. We have twenty families who rely on us for before and after-school care. We have over sixty children we, who we provide care for during summer break, snow days, and other school breaks. We also offer employment to eight staff members. Our lease is up on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-sixth. However, there was an option to extend our lease, we are writing to request to continue our lease after September fifteenth, twenty twenty-sixth. We know that the date seems to be far in the future, but with so many families that count on us, we need to be able to plan in advance. We appreciate your consideration. This is from Kathleen Maffey and Richard Zuffo. I, I, I've been involved with Kathleen's Gymnastics for many years. They're a wonderful organization. They do a lot for our community. They're, they're local people, live right here. As a matter of fact, they live right across from the Armory. They're good people that take care of our kids. There's nothing any more important than taking care of our kids. That's my, I'm, you know, that's where I'm at. And so, we need to, uh, think about this and, and, and discuss this. I, I don't think, there's not, there's nothing for me to discuss much. Uh, I want from the auditor's office, whenever it can, uh, the, the actual contract. In the past, and I like to leave things in the past as much as I can, I don't like to see anybody ram-rodded out of business. I ain't gonna tolerate it. And I thank that Kathleen's, and I know we have a Boys and Girls Club here in Norman County, praise God, they do a lot of stuff. I thank them for that. This is a local, uh, family that has operated this business for many years. I wanna see them to continue to stay here, and I wanna see them continue to grow. Yes, they are in our building. I've been making some contacts with some other individuals about trying to help Kathleen's Gymnastics as far as the building is concerned. Not gonna go into detail, but, uh, I, I'd like a copy of the contract sent to all three commissioners, as well as the county attorney. I'd like for the, the, this Board of Commissioners to look at the contract. I know what they're paying, I know what's been said they needed to pay. I've also heard that, you know, we, we're, we're losing money hand over fist at the Armory. I do not find that in my, my findings with the expenses that the county incurs. But folks, I think we're, I think this Board of Commissioners, and I'm just, I'm talking myself. I think we're responsible to help our businesses in our community, to help take care of our children. Anybody got anything to say in the public? If you're opposed it, oppose it. If not, I think we need to support Kathleen's Gymnastics in, in the very best possible way we can. Let's look at their contract. I'd like to see us extend this contract. I know they want it extended, and they provide a great deal of services to local families right here in our community. And I'm not gonna turn my back on, on people that's trying to help take care of our kids. That's just my two cents. Anybody got anything to say?
Do we still have county offices in that building at all?
No.
Nobody's in there?
We downstairs, they got an archive room for historical archives. The maintenance shop is downstairs in the, in the bottom. If you go look at the Armory, and I suggest that all three of us commissioners go take a tour with Kathleen and, and, and Mr. Zuffo. And I think there's things that this Board of Commissioner can do to help facilitate, uh, to, to enhance the building itself. I'm gonna sit here and tell you something, and I, I'm not gonna bring up nobody's name because it's gonna take me off. Even kids down there at that Armory, and, and Kathleen and them went without hot water for a long time. Because they refused to fix it. That's not right. It's not right. And I think there's things this Board of Commissioners can do to help Kathleen's Gymnastics.
Do we own that building?
Yes, it's our building.
Okay. That's more than I knew about it right there.
Yeah. It's an old Armory that was gave to us for a dollar from the state, I think it was. We have to keep the building. But they're upstairs, they only maintain the upstairs part of it. I'd like for you guys to go down there with me, take a look, and you'll see what I'm talking about.
How long have they been without hot water for the kids?
They have hot water now.
Oh, okay.
I, I found out about it, I dug into it, I talked to the, I don't even wanna get, I don't even get started. So, um, send us a contract, Sheila, if you would, let's all take a look at it. Let's get on this, let's take a trip down there, go upstairs, visit where the kids do, what they do, and what they might need. I've got some resources, I think, that we can utilize to take care of some of the building parts that we need to take care of. That's all I gotta say. Anybody else got anything? Yes, let's get the guys' hand back.
I've just been listening, you know, about your budgeting for insurance, uh, for county employees and stuff, and needing maintenance for the new jail, and we're here. I work for HFI, I don't know what your budgets are, but, but we do, um, sell maintenance, you know, and, and they, if you guys would entertain the idea, I can get ahold of someone in the office and they can come down and see what your needs are, and give you the price for a full-time employee that you don't have to pay healthcare on. And, and, and doing that, you get special rates for even emergencies and stuff like that.
You know, we're, we're, we won't turn down anything at this moment, so anything, like I said, we gotta look outside the box, because our, our, our maintenance part, you know, we get a lot of people that can mow grass, they got trash and clean toilet. It's hard to find a maintenance person to go down to his jail and work on those locks, those toilets and stuff like that, and, and weld and stuff like that. We did, we just don't, not getting that type of people, but, you know, if you guys, you work for HFI, you know, if you guys wanna try to get, meet with us and get a proposal put together.
I will bring that up to the.
Hires to be.
Office, you know, I, I'm over the food service department, so I do custom stainless fabrication and, and food service work. But I can talk to the people that are more into the plumbing and mechanical side buildings, you know, and, and have them get ahold of you and set up a meeting, and you guys can discuss on what your needs are, and I'm sure we can come up with a solution that.
Well, and, and I'm looking that, and I'm not here to knock it, I have an old man, but, cause you guys are very expensive.
Yeah, we are, but we are still one of the best contractors in the.
You are, and you get what you pay for and stuff like that, but we do have some local contractors that's going to be getting involved with helping some stuff, uh, H V A C work, plumbing work, stuff like that, which that's what I want. I want some local people, you know. I can get about, most people mow the grass and.
Yeah.
Sheila's cleaning the toilets.
We have a full-time person from HFI that is here at the home county schools.
Yeah, yeah, I see him around quite a bit, so, Robert, that, yeah. I, I, I wouldn't turn down that proposal at all to, to give us.
I don't know if it's something that you guys can afford or not, you know, but I just, listening to all this, you know, I'm thinking, you know, if they have a person that they can afford, they didn't have to pay insurance on, and they're fully insured, you know, it, it might help in it, it might not, I don't know.
We never know till we see the numbers and stuff like that. I'd be more than happy for you to do that, and like I said, I got some local guys that's gonna be giving us some cost prices for maintenance, and general maintenance, stuff like that too. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought you said you had a question.
Oh, I got it. Me and you, Jerry.
Thank you, everybody. Do you ever say anything?
No, you did pretty good. I'm looking for to see your numbers.
Yeah, we, we gotta get it going.